Normally, just so everybody knows, the only time that our drivers go like when they're plowed, and then, you know, they see, like, I mean, someone's there, they have their hands, they're kind of like, uh...
You know, but after, when they do, they did it on the street.
They need their car there, they need some...
Just, uh, just, uh, if the driver call that in, does it, before he's got, you know, they go on and...
So we've got a couple, some, our, our plow drivers will call it, like, hey, there's a car, it has to move in three hours, and we'll go out, and we'll take them, so, they'll use their patrol, and this, uh...
Hold it down.
How are you?
Then we, I was thinking, do we just... Then, so she came down here, she was here, she said, "Give me the money." She goes, "We need it."
Well, we've been doing, we've been doing, uh, for six months. Well, before, it's hard, and then we started...
Get a new director.
Interact. You can go out on your bike.
I told you, did I make it even?
No.
I have, I have three of them, the youngest is eleven, not in the twenty, coming...
Oh, wow.
But we're just gonna, we're trying to sell it.
It's a big jump, I thought it was gone, but I guess not.
So we're working on sitting through, we've been sitting through, actually, so...
How are you?
Good, good.
Excited about that, Pete, how are you?
Uh, we'll be there, we'll be there. A urban flow, that's our annual meeting.
It is, yeah. Yeah, isn't that sad? It's typical time, you know, she was, she had her kidney dialysis for two days, and she didn't matter, basically, the third one, she said, oh, this is horrible. She's there all the way, where's your bed, what else, seventy-eight, four.
Oh, my goodness, we were there today, and he was...
Everybody? Yeah, because he knows what's...
I know why you're here.
There's a lot of white here?
I know, wow, this is quick, that was quick.
All right, that's the way to do it.
Yeah, yeah, good for that.
Good for having the whole situation, you know, that, like, chat.
I'm on, I'm on vacation this month.
Yeah, I hear it, I'm...
Right, fat for a sock. That and Katie. Said, I'm only twelve years old, only this one year, only one year. Could be implied, it's taken up, you know, you come to my ears, I'm gonna be like, I'll give you one.
Sad, I'm not gonna be your old pet.
No. Time is...
You gotta be older than us.
Yeah. Always do your, uh, highest... Yeah, she, she was first, uh, she was... Full disclosure, that's why I'm here as much as I am. Actually, I...
Are you sure?
You're old, I'm like, yeah.
So we're all...
We'll see, we'll see, uh, and stuff, it's just like, we know.
Cold out there, it's getting cold.
But the guys and girls don't, you know? For sure.
Well, we've been feeling cold, we've been, we've been, and they would call it, it's a cloud today, and today's going to call it, look, uh, it's... So it was everything?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Well, thank y'all for something, yeah. Magister, magistership. Get some rest.
It's a little warm over my age.
Oh, four years.
Can you hear that, man?
I tried, my wife, maybe you have to...
Oh, that, that married, not a real...
Where are you? All the county.
He said it sounds like an action, then we all see, yeah, you see the little dog.
They left me here, they moved down there. Bill, boy, with the cargo, true. See, they used to go camping, uh, one of them, and, uh, anyone around here, uh, they're worried, they're going, uh, it's bad, okay? And, uh, so everyone, we had, we moved down, so we began to enjoy the place, from Hawaii to the country, you know, the worst of what they have type of thing, and then all of a sudden, they all sold everything in the black town. They sold all that property, all the buildings.
Well, I tell you, I did say, Kelly goes, "I have a snow day tomorrow," I said, "Oh, man, I'm gonna have to go to work, I have to..." Wait.
You want me to...
Stan said I gotta do it.
We got one minute.
No spell yet, huh?
That's a poor number word, don't think.
We got a minute, you know, we start on time, so if we can't start early, that would be wrong.
Good evening, welcome to the December first meeting of Bedford City Council, would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Here.
Salvi?
Here.
Lou Hardy?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Longino?
Here.
Coche?
Here.
Uh, council, you have the minutes of the work session of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, are there any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Longino, second by Smith? Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Lou Hardy? Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Uh, we have a couple presentations tonight, and the first one, uh, we have CJ Commander, the athletic director for Bedford City Schools, welcome, if you'd like to come forward.
All right, uh, I should say, good evening, sorry, I'm a little out of practice, I haven't been to the city council meeting yet, this is, and that's my fault. Um, so I'll be quick, uh, good evening there, everyone, uh, usually I come and I do a presentation of how, uh, the season has gone, so that's gonna be one of the next meetings I come to, this one is, um, a little bit of a different reason. Uh, one of the things that we're trying to bring back, uh, in the, I guess, in the grand order of how we do things at Bedford, and one of the things that's made Bedford great is we're constantly paying homage to a lot of the phenomenal student athletes that came through, uh, one of the things that we're bringing back this year is the, uh, Bedford Athletic Hall of Fame. Um, I'm not sure if council knows this, but amongst you, you have a gentleman who was a varsity letterman in seventy-two and seventy-three, all GCC, first team and second team, was selected to play in the East West All-Star Game, uh, in seventy-two, that was just his baseball career at Bedford. He was a multi-sport threat, so he played a little bit of basketball, too, where he ended up being a varsity letterman and all GCC first team, uh, as a, uh, center, are you?
Uh, point guard.
Point guard?
I'm a little guy.
All right, you just heard a little now, so, all right, and I mean that tall last night, all right? So, along with some of those other accolades as a basketball player, um, third team, all GCC, all GCC defense, um, ended up playing baseball and basketball at Tri-C, where he was team captain in seventy-five and was first team Great Lakes region, uh, also was good enough to be offered a tryout with the Chicago White Sox at one point. So, um, with the power vested in me, uh, by the Hall of Fame Committee, uh, Councilman Vic Lou Hardy, uh, welcome to the Bedford Athletics Hall of Fame. You don't wanna speak. So, um, again, with, with this being year three, uh, Councilman Lou Hardy, well, I, I should say, uh, all, all of the councilmen and women up here, um, it's been great being welcomed in and being allowed to come and present and speak on the, uh, the progress that, that we're able to make here at Bedford, and one of the things that Councilman Lou Hardy has been on me about is, hey, we gotta get the Athletic Hall of Fame going back, I think that's 'cause he knew he was getting in. But, at the same time, uh, I do have to, and I'm sure he will as well, in, in his speech, um, have to give a lot of credit to former superintendent Marty Moscow, who has called me multiple times to sing his praises, uh, in terms of the work that he not only did while he was at Bedford, but I, I guess in his post-high school career, while still serving the city and the community. Um, just to kind of give you a heads up, uh, the ceremony is gonna be on the seventh of February, so you got time, uh, we need to line up somebody who's gonna present for you. Uh, what I'd like to do is I'm gonna bring you and the rest of the class in, uh, on the sixth, last period of the day, I'm gonna bring all of the athletes into the gymnasium, and I want all of the athletes to be able to hear from you and the rest of the class in terms of your experience and what it was like to carry the torch and, and be a phenomenal student and athlete while you were there, uh, and then the induction ceremony will be the seventh. Uh, I also wanna bring the class in the evening of the sixth, when our boys' basketball team hosts Sonny Johnson and his Garfield Bulldogs, while we intend to beat them, so we'll just say when we beat Sonny Johnson and his Garfield Bulldogs, so we'll bring you down on the floor at halftime, you and the rest of the class to introduce you. Um, the members of the class, uh, there's one I still can't give away, 'cause he doesn't know yet, but, uh, Liz Leonard, who is a swimmer.
Oh, yeah, she swam, she swam, my daughter, she swam with my daughter.
There you go, so Liz Leonard is going in, um, who else is going in, Ricky Perez?
Ricky, I coached.
Ricky's going in, uh, with you, so that'll be great, um, Carmen Glover, played basketball, ended up going to Syracuse, uh, is, is gonna be part of that class. And there's somebody I'm leaving out, so forgive me, I think I'm getting old, but, um, I think it's gonna be a great night, it's gonna be a great way to bring back the tradition that, that is truly, uh, one of the things that makes Bedford great, that makes us unique, so, again, I can't thank you enough for all that you have done for me as an incoming A.D., to help me to learn the culture and learn the community, and, and, and the embrace that I felt from you as well as everyone else about, you know, being able to restart things. Um, so I think this is definitely a step in the right direction, and we're looking forward to it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
If everyone's okay, I am gonna leave, because I have laundry to get ready for a game tomorrow, so...
No, but thank you for coming.
No problem.
Then our next presentation is, uh, our annual, uh, donation to Meals on Wheels, the city hall staff, uh, on Fridays and other special days during the year get to wear blue jeans to work, and to wear blue jeans, they gotta pay a buck, and that all adds up to a pretty good sum of money here that we donate annually to the Meals on Wheels. And it's, it's with real great sadness that Diana Mowat, the director of Meals on Wheels, passed away on Thanksgiving Day, and I was thinking, should we maybe delay this or not, and knowing Diana, she was just a terrific lady, and worked really hard for, uh, the Meals on Wheels, and knowing her, she would've said, no, no, give you the check, and then worry about the other later. Uh, so we are gonna do that, if I can have Brett? I'm gonna beat you in the middle there. This is Brett Johnson, he's the interim director now of Meals on Wheels. Yeah, and Becky, yes, the duo team here, that's, that's really good, so I want to present you with this check. I believe it's for eight hundred and fifty dollars.
That's great.
That's a lot of blue jeans.
That's a, that's a lot of blue jeans, thank you so much, thank you to... Yeah, absolutely, on behalf of the fifty-seven volunteers and the over seventy-five people who receive a meal five days a week, thank you. As you mentioned, we lost on Thursday, um, the leader, Diana Mowat, on her favorite holiday, which gives us a lot of reason to be thankful, uh, she's really hard shoes to fill, my wife and I are just intern, we've been working with Diana, we're just volunteers, Bedford residents. So we look forward to helping move that along, we've promised our clients in this interim that we'll continue to serve delicious meals, brought to you by smiling volunteers, mayor's one of those volunteers, that brings meals to their folks. Um, last week, we took four hundred thirty meals to people in the Bedford community, that's in the four-four-one-four-six zip code, um, it's a real community effort, without the community doing it, it wouldn't happen. It's completely volunteer-based, with, with the exception of our kitchen manager, she's the only paid person, and she doesn't make enough money to survive. Um, thank you again for this generous donation, I promise that your investment will have immense dividends, and you will take good care of using this money wisely, thank you so much.
Thank you. And also, we have Sandy and Tony's wife, volunteers.
They do, yeah, that's right, thank you, we're always looking for more volunteers.
And Vic did...
And you had this retired, you had this retired, but...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't forget that part.
Oh, don't go away. Had my back on him, but... How you doing?
I'm great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'm Dave, um, I've been on Bedford Falls, uh, for, oh, God, twenty-eight years now, I guess, um, but we know all the good work that you guys do, we very much appreciate it, um, you know, we're out in the community every day, and we know a lot of people in this town and in the area that need the help, so we, uh, really respect the work that you guys do, so, on behalf of sixteen eighty-three, I present you a check for five hundred dollars.
Oh, that's great, thank you so much. I'll come around and want checks. You can just open your wallet.
You see, it takes two of you to this place, or...
Here you go.
Very good, very good. Uh, let's start reports, Mr. City Manager. Oh, we got unfinished, I'm trying to get out of here quicker. Okay, John, ordinance eighty-tw five.
Yes, is, is an ordinance making, uh, to make appropriations for current expenses and expenditures of the city of Bedford during the year twenty twenty-six, and declaring an emergency.
Can I have a motion for suspension by Longino, second by Smith, call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. Have motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Lou Hardy, um, Jen?
Thank you, Mayor, this is the third and final reading for next year's budget, um, we did have a reading on, um, November third, and we're on November seventeenth, and we'll get this passed today, so we can have, um, budgetary money for next year.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes. Now we get to reports, there's a lot of good stuff happening, and, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, congratulations, Councilman Lou Hardy, well deserved, very exciting, uh, just a few items tonight, uh, I'd like to provide an update regarding ninety-seven Norfield, uh, the demolition, the land bank awarded that project to a contractor who is set to begin this week, uh, in taking that large, uh, structure down, there's a good chance that a portion of the side street there, interstate, will be closed, uh, so bear with us for large dumpsters and containers that'll have to be, uh, stationed in the roadway, but the good news is that structure is coming down. We, city did officially receive notice that we were awarded a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to go towards the Greencroft Park, uh, enhancements, which will take place, uh, starting in the spring, so we're excited about that project. That'll be our second, uh, park that we worked to, um, completely, uh, update and renovate, specifically the playground equipment, uh, in twenty twenty-five, we did Taft Park. Also, I'd like to mention that we are working to, and surprisingly, I was shocked that our, uh, security cameras, the license plate reading cameras along the Bedford Auto Mile that are directly fed into our police department, um, they're over eight years old already, and we know with technology how quickly that can be dated, so we are working to upgrade all of those, the goal is to upgrade those next year. Uh, police department did identify a grant, so Jennifer Kuzma and, um, staff members in the P D are looking to submit that, hopefully we'll get funded, but if we don't, we'll, we'll get other means, but we will be, uh, looking to upgrade those, uh, that technology. Just a reminder, we do have snow coming, not sure how much, but, uh, I believe it was put out there earlier, anything over two inches, a parking ban does go into place, um, please be, uh, cooperative regarding that parking ban. The last thing we wanna do is have individuals getting tickets, or worst case, we'd have vehicles left for, you know, over a week that had to get towed, we don't wanna do that, um, it's also beneficial, not only for the safety of the plow drivers, but for, for the safety of the public, uh, those driving in their vehicles, those walking, um, it allows us, allow our plow drivers to clear those roadways as quickly and efficiently as possible, so we appreciate everyone's cooperation, uh, with the upcoming weather. And lastly, I just want to take a minute and really, uh, commend our staff in the service department, uh, as well as our parks and recreation department, uh, volunteers from, uh, the fire department for the event last Wednesday, they did an outstanding job. Uh, I can tell you the, the lights, um, and when I say I, you have to compliment all of our, uh, department, that we have so many guys that are working with leaf collection and everything else, uh, sewer repairs on Broadway, uh, dig jobs on other side streets, the work that they do allows us to pull three, sometimes four, staff members, we pull them in, in mid-September, and they start with those decorations, so, in essence, for those few months, you know, the guys in the garage, they're carrying more weight, so we can get this done. And they never disappoint, and it's gonna be even better next year, so stay tuned when the expansion is lit up, that's our goal, um, but they did a tremendous job, and our parks and recreation department, and what they were able to do and transform certain spaces, specifically the train depot, if you didn't get a chance, make that a point in the future to peek your head in there, even if you don't have little ones that wanna see Santa, you have to peek your head into that depot, and how it's decorated, and the video screens, and everything else, it is just, no one does it, but, honest to God, I, you know, I, it, they, they did a tremendous job, and I, I have to point out, uh, and commend, commend all of those involved, um, you know, our service department, Sean Francis was down there a lot, uh, Mike Callahan, Sarah Gennadi, all of our staff members, Bob Plisky, uh, kudos, I mean, I know I'm missing some, some others. And I also just wanna point out the work with all of the volunteers and the historical society, uh, they expanded their offerings, and it really made for, um, personally, like, my imagination, like, you see all of these things going on, it's not gonna just be a Wednesday, flick the switch, and the lights come down, that's awesome, and we've done that, but now to see how it can be expanded, and have concerts in the church, or activities in the old nature stone building, activities in the museum, um, it's, it's awesome, so I just wanted to take a minute and thank, uh, and extend our appreciation to everyone involved, 'cause for those that buried the weather, it was worth it, so, end of report.
Thank you, Mr. Plow Director.
I just wanna congratulate Councilman Lou Hardy, send my condolences to the Asbury family and Diana's family, and thank the Meals on Wheels volunteers and everyone involved with the, uh, organization, and that's it, end of report.
Thank you. Governor Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor, congratulations, Councilman Lou Hardy, your induction, and, um, I meant to, condolences also to those, um, that have recently passed, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, councils, Mrs. Spinks?
Kudos to, uh, Vic, Vic was a, a big part of when I used to have the Hoopitup Camp, uh, I think the kids were kinda scared of it a little bit, but, uh, he always pitched in and helped me out with that, and, uh, uh, him and David Wips, that used to be here, David passed several years ago, and, uh, those guys are pretty impressive, um, come off the rough and rough, but they're, they're, they're pretty big teddy bears, and do a lot for the kids, and, um, what some of y'all may not know is how instrumental that Vic was with, uh, the baseball camp, uh, this, uh, summer and last summer, wasn't it, Vic, with, uh, the help of his buddy, Bill Crossroad, but, uh, that was something that he brought and, uh, donated his time to do that, so, um, and I'm also sucking up, so he'll be, uh, be nice in the next ten meetings, this is his second to last meeting, so we, we know he's gonna be, so we're giving him candy and all kind of stuff to go... The guy's already done it back, but, uh, thank you, Vic, for what all you've done for our kids and, uh, that look up to you and, you know, like talk, he talked about kids not even, you know, knowing how to use a glove, um, at the camp and stuff. And he came back and it was just like, so he made sure that all these kids, uh, know how to use a baseball glove and how important sports can be. A few doing, and that's, I'm hoping to bring back that, that Hoopitup camp one day again. It was for kids that couldn't afford to go to camp. Um, it was a free camp, so after COVID, it kind of got, it was all, um, condolences again for Donna, it's, uh, uh, family. Um, I had the pleasure, people just didn't realize how much Donna did. It was just, uh, Director of Mills and Wells, she cared about every one of those clients and made sure in the grants that she went out. And she even went out and found out a couple of, uh, uh, the, uh, our clients that were getting food were giving it to their animals, because they were on a fixed budget, so they would not eat. Well, she got a thing through PetSmart, uh, got a grant where we got all kind of stuff for, for, uh, clients' animals and stuff. Christmas, everything, all the holidays. She made sure that everybody, all the clients, got some little something, and that was something that she went out of her way to do. Um, she always been volunteers, always made sure to show how appreciative she was. Um, she's truly, truly got a bee, uh, she was amazing human being. Um, helped so many people, would never turn anybody down and would come out of her own pocket to help somebody, make sure everybody got fed that needed it. Um, with that said, my church, Church in Azurin, um, is doing something that's really cool. I love my church too, they're very giving back to the community. Some little ladies have come up with an idea because things are really high right now, a lot of families are, you know, some families are too proud to go to the food pantry, um, that we have at St. Helen, so household has at Ellenwood as well. But they're putting bags together with, uh, recipes in them that has all the ingredients. So if you know of a family or any of the other council people up here have somebody and you're worried that maybe having a hard time, let me know, because we're gonna be, uh, delivering these. And some people, like I said, it's kind of embarrassing for them, but, uh, so you can reach out to me, um, and we're gonna make sure that people are, are fed, um, in their, in Bedford. It's around in areas if they need it. Uh, let's see, yeah, coo, uh, again, piggybacking on what Mike said, it was just a feel-good and proud moment to, to live in Bedford. I'm not from Bedford, but I'm here now playing on sand in my last breath. Um, but it was such a feel-good to look over and see nature stone and see twinkling lights in there, see what it could be, if it was a restaurant or whatever. And then, uh, Rich Potasky in the back, which is one of our, uh, board members, he's, uh, Bedford Historical Society Board Member. He and his lovely wife with a voice like an angel, uh, put on a little concert and they had friends. And it was so cool to see, you know, what this could be, what's going on. So, um, we've got a lot of people working behind the scenes and there's some great things coming, um, in the future for the downtown area and for Bedford Historical Society. So, uh, T-shirt, um, which Rich was, uh, very instrumental in that, has a, uh, a kind of a vintage look with Santa sending that the gazebo. Uh, we had those for sale, they're still for sale. Um, I'm actually selling them out of my car. I have a bunch in my car right now. So if, or you can go to the museum, there's open a Tuesday and Thursday from ten to four, Wednesday and Friday from ten to two. So, um, Chris Kendallmark is coming up on, uh, the thirteenth, and we're partnered with a couple of the businesses downtown. That's gonna be December thirteenth from eleven to four. Um, Speaker Series is the night before, February the twelfth, in the old community, in the old church community room. It's gonna be, the Speaker Series will be Dick Squire at Bedford Boy, that's at seven P M. And our very own Betsy Squire will be lead, will be leading that. Let's see, don't, uh, forget, please don't put your trash cans out in the middle of the street on trash days with this big piles of snow. Um, let's see. And, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Sully.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, first, I would like to congratulate Councilman Fluharty on his well-deserved athletic honor. And because of that, I am dedicating every word of my council report tonight to you.
Does that end the report? No. Much more.
Since the November seventeen council meeting, I visited Ward Two residents as well as responded to resident phone calls. As a reminder to residents, I do not currently have access to my city email account, so please contact me by phone only. My number is four four zero four three nine, excuse me, I'm getting my law office number, no, sorry, four four zero two three two eight nine six four, that's my home phone. Uh, most complaints continue to be related to traffic violations. I myself have seen, uh, drivers blowing through stop signs and solid red lights just in the past week. Actually coming to this council, City Hall today, a, a car went right through a stop sign right next to me. Um, I understand the police department is focusing more attention on citing bad drivers, which is needed. Uh, one reason, uh, one resident made, uh, me aware of several coyotes roaming in the area of Wellman and Vale Street. Uh, residents, especially in the area of this wooded area, may want to keep their small pets in protected areas in your home and yard. Uh, like the many deer in Ward Two, coyotes can be seen on occasion anywhere in the ward, so small pets anywhere are vulnerable if they are not, you know, fenced in area. A Wentzal Road resident complained that the company or companies hauling dirt to and from, uh, property at the dead end in Wentzal are not cleaning up dirt spills in the roadway. Over the past eighteen months, I probably have been called to see incidents of the dumped dirt two dozen times by different Wentzal residents. Uh, Mike, in the past year, I suggested that the, uh, appropriate city officials and businesses, business owners who operate at the dead end of Wentzal meet to come up with a final solution to the problem of trucks losing some of their loads on Wentzal Road. To date, have any discussions taken place and if so, was there an, an agreed upon resolution?
So we, we did speak to a couple of those businesses down there. Um, one of the things that would be beneficial is if, if residents on that street see it, if stuff, if there's dirt that, uh, contact us, contact both either City Manager's Office or the Service Department. And we will immediately get out there and get it addressed. Um, in the past, we've had those companies come down, they've had it cleaned up. Um, one of the times we did go out there and they had actually, uh, they knew that it had happened and they had actually sent other staff members out, because when we got there, they were actually shoveling it up and cleaning it. So they're being, they're conscientious of it. I, I, I will admit, they probably don't do it all the time, but if the residents can notify us, we'll get there immediately, um, and try to have that conversation instead of waiting a couple of weeks and then...
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, November seventh, seventh elections, congratulations, those candidates that won election locally. Uh, there will be two new council members, Fred Spiker, who's here, in Ward Three, and, uh, Corey Berry in Ward Five. Best wishes too to those candidates who also spent many hours of their personal time and some of their own money to offer voters a choice. Budget meeting, since November third, uh, council meeting, we had budget hearings for the municipal court, finance, finance department and fire department. Fire Chief Harding provided counsel with a memo with a short list of projects that are not part of the current capital improvement schedule of the fire department. One item listed, uh, is a dormitory project. It is my understanding that the focus of this project is to make improvements in, in the physical wall separation of male and female firefighters. I suggest council and administration consider making this project a priority so all firefighters have the appropriate expectation of privacy in their personal sleeping units. Eagles Club Officer of the Year Dinner. I attended the annual Eagles Club Officer of the Year Dinner that honors a member of the Bedford Police Department and Fire Department. Congratulations again to Police Officer Matt Hanska and Fireman Lieutenant Ryan Turk. Uh, thank you to the Eagles Club for hosting the event and generous cash donations to both departments. Uh, Veterans Day Ceremony. Thank you to all who arranged and attended the Veterans Day Ceremony, November eleventh, which is held at the V F W Hall this year due to the weather. I encourage more residents to take an hour next year to show your appreciation to our local veterans, uh, service and get a chance to meet and talk with them. Downtown Bedford Historic District Streetscape and Tree Lighting Ceremony. The staff of the Service Department once again did a great job decorating the historic district for the holidays. Thanks for all the city workers, too, that made the annual tree light ceremony possible in Bedford Square. It was a success, um, it was well-attended in spite of the cold and windy conditions. Bay Market, uh, six oh seven six thirteen Norfield Road update. During my visit to this, uh, property this morning, the old motorboat that was in the parking lot has been removed. However, I observed no new, uh, cures regarding exterior ordinance violations. The next court date is set for December eighth at nine A M. Uh, tomorrow's stars of Bedford Daycare, three fifty Columbus Road. Mike, I understand that after I brought the deteriorated, uh, parking lot signage issued to the city's attention a few months ago, that the owner and/or tenant were cited and required to cure the deficiency. Are you aware if the owner or, uh, of the property or tenant have responded to the citation and indicated a timetable for completion of the repair or removal?
Uh, I don't have a timeline, but I know they selected a contractor.
Okay.
Because I think they were working with the building department. I'd have to confirm that to see if a permit was pulled, uh, but they did provide information specifically on the contractor.
Thank you. Uh, Taft Park, I find, I found, uh, three incidents of single vehicles on the property after closing hours, but I did not call, uh, the police department as they left, as the vehicles left as soon as they saw me enter the parking lot. Uh, limited discard trash and beer cans continue to be found in the property, but primarily in the parking lot. Received no, uh, park complaints from residents since the last council meeting. Ohio House Bill ninety-two, as I promised at the November third council meeting, would review Ohio House Bill ninety-two and report my findings. Uh, the reason this bill needed review was that the city manager, uh, city manager Malice warned council that he learned that there was legislation under consideration in the Ohio House representatives that would gut the primary tool the city has to recover costs incurred due to ordinance violations related to public health safety, including property maintenance as well as water sewer services provided by the city to residents and businesses in Bedford. Uh, that would result in substantial loss of money to the city of Bedford, which means you and I would pay our bills, uh, pay our bills, will have to make up the difference in increased costs and services. Hospital ninety-two was introduced in the Ohio House Representatives in February and is currently in the Ohio House Local Government Committee. There has already been several hearings on the bill. Um, it was a fifth, uh, hearing last week. After my review of the bill, the Legislative Service Commission's analysis of the bill and attempting to get a response from the bill sponsor, I suggest council pass a resolution in opposition to Ohio, Ohio House Bill ninety-two or its substitutes. As, uh, as the bill is introduced or its substitute, uh, or the substitute bill as well, uh, substitute House Bill ninety-two for the following reasons. Ohio House Bill ninety-two likely conflicts with Article eighteen, section four and six of the Ohio Constitution, infringes on Bedford's home rule authority to run public utility, greatly increases the labor and legal costs to recover money from deliquent water sewer accounts as well as other services the city provides for remediation of ordinance violations. It will likely increase the number of past due accounts, city enforcement costs in many cases will exceed the amount of money the city will recover. Enforcement will be reduced accordingly, which may have the effect of increasing non-compliance of property owners or tenants learn that the ordinance are likely to be enforced, not to be enforced due to the exorbitant, uh, cost to do so. Trans, uh, transfers more the burden of making sure tenants are paying utilities from landlords to municipalities and hamper, and hampering cities with the new costly, complicated and time-consuming compliance demands. The new standard are so burdensome that in some cases it will be impossible for Bedford and other municipalities to afford enforcement, if not even be able to legally comply with the change in the law. Lastly, and, but most importantly, uh, I attended the recent candlelight vigil for Councilman Jeff Asbury. Uh, my senses, my sincere sympathy to his wife, children, extended family and friends of Ward Five from Councilman Jeff Asbury, who recently unexpectedly passed away. Jeff grew up in Ward Two and I believe graduated with my younger brother. On council, I appreciate that Jeff took the time to carefully read the documents received to prepare for council work sessions and council meetings. I was confident that if I did not catch a substantive error that needed to be corrected, Jeff would catch it, which I respected. Uh, rest in peace, Jeff. Uh, thank you, end of report. Mr. Fluharty.
Well, it's a bittersweet, uh, night for me with this award here on top of, but with Dinah passing away. Uh, I did Meals on Wheels for about seven or eight years myself, and, uh, my heart goes out to the family and her husband, Don, uh, Don's a super guy. And, uh, I know if he was here tonight, he would be one of the first ones congratulating me. And, uh, that's how close I was with the family, uh, going over there and talking to them and seeing them all the time. They were in my ward, so that helped that I was able to stay in touch with them a lot. Um, thank guys, all you guys up here for your kind words and all. Uh, next meeting will be my last meeting and, uh, I will outdo Salvi when it comes to getting a talk, so he's only getting three minutes or two minutes, or I'm gonna cut his mic off, so you won't have to worry about him for one more time. But anyhow, uh, I will be prepared then with, uh, uh, a summary of, uh, the last eight years. Thank you, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Spence.
Good evening. And first I would like to express my sincere heartfelt condolences to the Moab family and also, um, the Asbury family. Bedford, please continue to pray for these families at this time of grieving. Congrats to the little one, I mean, Vic. Vic, it's been a pleasure, um, I, I don't know, wait until your last meeting to tell you this, but it's been a pleasure working with you. I hope that your retirement is, you know, truthful. I mean, I know you're gonna, uh, play a lot of golf and, you know, enjoy yourself, really enjoy yourself. Because, uh, the way things are going now, man, it's, you have to, every moment, you have to really enjoy it and, you know, take advantage of it. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Longino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, also I'd like to, uh, express my condolences, uh, lost to the city, uh, in both, in both accidents, uh, so God rest their souls. My wife, uh, like, like the mayor was saying, my wife does, uh, Meals on Wheels and had me with her, I guess a couple of weeks ago. So she told me, uh, you're not working now, you'll be with me every week, so I guess I'm also doing Meals on Wheels as well, so, uh, now that I'm a member of Meals on Wheels, so, um, I want to give a shout out to the Service Department. Yeah, it was great at the, uh, lighting, but I'm thought, I wanted to give a shout out to them for that first snowfall that hit hard and they were on it. Uh, I, you know, Thanksgiving, you know, we were already shocked that we got that much snow and then when I woke up that morning, I was like, wow, and I got up and I rode around the ward and, and I can honestly say I didn't see any. I mean, obviously they got up before me, so, but they were out there and they handled their business, because, uh, you know, talking to the residents, I didn't have to hear anybody say, we're not gonna hit our streets, but, but they were on it, you know. So, and I just want to let people know, as I told them last year, when I had a, a guy new say, why didn't our snow, our streets get plowed? I mean, sometimes you get the street hitting there, sometimes the snow comes back down, they, they're out there, you guys are working, they're not messing around, they're doing their business. So shout out to the Service Department, uh, for doing their job. Uh, good, another good thing, and, and I was wrong on my date, so I messed with Omar on, on the dates he gave me for the old Gitgo, which is now Sanoco, it is open and running. So go ahead and, uh, go see them and see what they got going on there. Still got more things to come, uh, when I went in there the one day, they weren't serving food or anything, wasn't ready to go in, but it's gonna be nice. I mean, it, it was nice. wasn't ready to go in. But it's going to be nice. I mean, it was nice now, but, but the lot, he got a lot of good plans coming on. There's going to be things going on over there. So I just want to give, uh, Omar the shout out to that as well. Uh, I guess I'm going to be short. So I yield my time.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to add on to what everybody else has been saying tonight and, uh, with the passing of, uh, Dinah and, and Jeff, been a, been a rough, little rough time up here. But we're going to get through all that and we're going to keep all our families in our prayers. Um, and again, the, uh, the tree lighting ceremony again was awesome. And I just want to add my thanks to all the people at Service and Rec. And, uh, they, they just do a tremendous draw, job. And I know that at the moment we flipped the switch, all their hearts stopped for a minute that all the lights are going to pop on and then they're like, then they can relax. Uh, it just, it's just amazing every year what they do down there. And it was like, kind of novel this year. We had a, a guest switch, switch guy, uh, Takashi Bukai from Japan was in, visiting with, with the Dugger family. And, uh, we had him flip the switch and he was, he was pretty amazed by it. And the city gave him a nice warm welcome there and, uh, he, he enjoyed it. And it was so nice to have him there. And, you know, we usually have a couple of kids doing it, but this was, this was different. Really good. I, I appreciated it. And, uh, to have the, uh, Historical Society involved with the, uh, tree lighting was awesome. The stuff going on in the church and the museum and at the old nature stone building, it just shows even more community involvement and, and it was, I, I really enjoyed it. And, uh, I could see where that can grow. And, and I know the, uh, Historical Society is working on some big things for next year. So it's going to be exciting to watch what they do down there. And, uh, let's get on with business. Ordinance number 8525.
Authorizes the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Tinkers Creek Watershed Partners in declaring emergency.
A motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Kochee?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Smith, second by Longino. Uh, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a memorandum of understanding with Tinker's Creek Watershed and it really is, uh, involving the city's MS4 permit through the Ohio EPA. Uh, the MOU basically identifies what responsibilities the city is going to undertake and what responsibilities, uh, Tinker Creek, Tinkers Creek Watershed, um, how they're going to assist us. There's a number of different requirements that we have to meet as it relates to the discharge, stormwater discharge with our MS4 permit. So there's, uh, there's items that for instance, Tinkers Creek Watershed will be, um, agreeing to. And we can acknowledge that in our permit when it's time for the renewal and we won't have to do those items separately.
Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Kochee?
Yes.
Ordinance number 86-25.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a Phase Two Stormwater Services Agreement with the Cogga County Board of Health for the authority and consent to provide Phase Two Stormwater Services in the years 2026 and 2027 and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Longino, second by Smith. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Kochee?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Uh, Mike?
This agreement is also in relation to the city's MS4 permit with Ohio EPA, uh, specifically, uh, it's in response to US EPA's, uh, stormwa, Phase Two Stormwater Regulations that were put into place in 2003. Uh, the agreement that we're entering into is with the Cogga County Board of Health. And similarly, there's a number of items that they'll be able to complete for the city that we can identify in our permit at the time of renewal.
Good. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Kochee?
Yes.
Now we come to the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address and your comment.
Heidi Semiel, 958 Archer Road. Um, I just wanted to say the tenacity that Steve has taken with Bay Market has really paid off. I know how annoying it might be to hear every single council meeting, but it's, um, I'm going to borrow a word from my sister. It's no longer spurious looking. Um, I was in that store one time and never went back. So, um, windows are clean. It looks much better. Um, it's a cleaned up area over there. And also, um, I didn't make it for the tree lighting ceremony, but I did make a point to drive down there. It's gorgeous. So yeah, thanks to everybody that had any part of that.
Thank you. Nobody else? Have a motion for adjournment. Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Longino?